All right. Who's Sandy tonight?
I'll be Sandy.
All right, roll call.
Roll call Sandy. All right, hold on one second here. Councilmember Palafini. Councilmember Tavallaro.
Here.
Councilmember Green.
Present.
And Mayor Green.
Here.
Councilmember Hall is absent, but I believe he's on his way. Do we have to do anything if he's gonna be?
Do we excuse him in case he doesn't make it?
Yeah, I think your practice is to excuse councilmembers when they're absent. But he's intending to be here. It's at the council's discretion if you want to make that motion.
Okay. All right, non-agenda public comment. Wow. All that public we have. Councilmember announcements. Ken, you got anything?
The only thing I have to announce, I again went to a C- two C meeting, which is Collier Interpretive and Information Center. We talked about, again, we'll be building a trail around the Collier Center for tourists, I guess. And we did discuss the new kind of methods that the Ford Foundation is actually starting to promote as far as they've changed their tack to more project-oriented things versus, I don't know what they have. First one was community, now it's community projects. So, and they've increased all the fees for their grants.
That it?
That's it.
Okay. Sue?
Yes. So, Great Northern did their free lunches for the kids this summer again. I think it's year five or six or seven. I don't know how many. And it was successful. They have the free lunches at Bel Air and at Mountain View. And they finished up last week. And then I helped with that throughout the summer. There's lots of volunteers for that. And then Transportation, Transportation Committee meeting last, yesterday afternoon, and they are still working on changes for the stage routes. And that's it for me.
Okay. Stacy?
Okay. The first thing, just checking on, I think I mentioned last meeting at the ending about signs for speed limit. I don't know if that's been, if that's a process we have to talk about or what, but I did go back and review. I see different signs, different places, 25 and 30 in the residential areas. I thought it was all 25, but some say 30 by the college. I think on College Avenue it says 30 one place and 25 another. I'm not sure, but I just wondered if we're doing anything about that. I did saw the signs that you put up for the park that we did years ago for Lincoln Heights. Those are great, little swing signs, people love those. We just thought we're doing something about that. My concern came from the Lincoln Parkway Avenue or Streetway, whatever it's called now, because everybody's flying through there, so. Hope nobody gets hit.
Put the holes back in the ground.
That'll stop them. Okay, the next thing, I just have a prepared, something I brought, and it goes with this. My understanding with the city council is that there are a number of individuals selected by the community or sometimes appointed by the existing council chair. Either case, a team is formed with individual and different personalities aligned together to do a certain action or purpose. Each person or team member can vote any way they can choose at every time. This concept was challenged in our last meeting in reference to the increasing sales tax vote. Challenged by the aggressive way I was addressed in asking, why did I change my vote? And to list my reasons, the off-color remarks said under breath and to me as I exited the building showed unprofessional and unethical behavior. That behavior continued on social media where more negative comments were made the next few days. It's very interesting that previous votes within my last nine years as a council have not been posted on social media, but this did. This brings to mind personal agendas not spoken that support activities and programs which benefit certain organizations. To say that I don't understand processes or planning is juvenile and not mature. As I've said before, I can agree to disagree. I'll add, without being divisive and not professional, any person at any time can change and vote any way they feel. Moving forward, I agree with the positive ethics culture of treating everyone in a fair and respectful way. I will continue to behave that way. I also find it interesting that some have asked me, have I followed up with individuals involved? Usually I would if I thought the discussion would be fair, honest, and respectful. I'm not sure it would be. I remain dedicated to doing what's right for the sitting citizens of Weed, California, ensuring that the best possible decisions, combined with transparency, with absolute financial accountability, is 100% apparent in all activities associated with the council member responsibilities and duties. Period, that's all. Just wanted to share that. That's all I have, Ms. Mayor.
And I don't have anything, so no report. Consent agenda? Is there anything on the agenda that anybody would like to pull off for further discussion? Or I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will move to approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second it.
I just have one change. I'm sorry to say it quicker. There was one place right after the minutes opening, it just had the greens, she missed the greens up, incorrectly, Kim and myself. Ms. Mayor, so that's all, one correction.
In the minutes?
Yeah. I would amend that motion to agree to approve the consent agenda and the minutes as amended.
Amended.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Council business. Public works. You're up.
Oh, it's up. Can introduce you Paul Ruder from Pace Engineering. He's our city engineer.
And he is here to bring us the rate study that we've been working on.
Thank you, Craig. Good evening, council members. So this effort was really a continuation from the 2017 effort when the rate structures were modified substantially. At that time, the city created an ad hoc committee of a couple of council members, city staff members, and some citizen volunteers. And we continued that trend for this five-year update. We met several times over the last several months. I think we started in January and had in-person and virtual meetings. The last one was last month, I believe. So we had some challenges working through the financials. It was a little inconvenient for us to lose the city finance director right after we started the process, but I think we navigated through that. So I've got a, kind of a cursory slide presentation here that doesn't go into every gory detail of the document that you guys have probably seen, but I think it touches on the important things. In 2017, we made five-year projections for revenue and expenditures in both your water and sewer enterprise funds. And so one of the first things we did was go back and see how we hit those numbers. So with that, I'll get started here. So pertaining to the water fund, actually, the five-year revenue and expense projections in 2017 hit fairly close to projections. Since 2017, the city's acquired the Bohn Spring Water Supply, which is a huge accomplishment. You guys, congratulations for that. That was a huge effort. The downside was that you incurred some costs, legal and expert and consultant costs to accomplish that, but the bottom line is you accomplished it. So the funding for that effort was borrowed from the general fund. The city entered, actually, the last fiscal year, which ended June 30th, with about $186,000 in cash, which is pretty decent. And the city was able to make a $225,000 payment to the general fund last fiscal year, which is nice. It paid off a pretty good portion of that debt. So going forward here in terms of financial goals and looking at expenditures, you know, I think I checked this morning, the one-year CPI in California, it's hovering just over 8%, I think. The city has always done really well over the years with keeping its operating expenditures at or below inflation. So we had some discussions on this amongst the committee, and we felt trying to project a five-year inflation based on our current trends would just blow things out of the water. So in 2017, we used 2.5% per year, and we actually hit things pretty close. But this year, in light of everything that's going on, we thought 4% was more responsible for an inflation anticipation for the next five years. In terms of operating reserve, that's similar to how the city has been managing its water fund. The operating reserve, that 25% is a, 25% of annual operating expenses the city tries to have in reserve. And it's much like a savings account that we would have in our personal life, and it's really designed for the ebb and flow of revenue coming into the enterprise fund. Most communities I work with strive for about 25% of operating expenses for that. Something that we didn't talk much about in 2017, really didn't track it either, is debt coverage ratio. And that's really important because it keeps you in good standings with financial institutions for any loans you might have or future loans that you're going after. And what that means is that the banks want you to have revenue less expenses more, equal to 20% more than your debt coverage. So if you have, say you have $100 in cash, the bank wants you to have, or say you had $100 in debt, the bank would want you to have a net revenue of $120 to cover that, much like applying for a home mortgage and the mortgage brokers look at ratios, et cetera. So I'll talk a little bit more about that. One goal that the committee set was to try to pay off the general fund by the end of this five-year study period, which would be June 30th, 2027. And I think we've got a plan to do that. And in doing so, we would be able to eliminate the $9 per connection surcharge that was implemented in about 2015, 16-ish, which I know is important to a lot of the city rate payers. And with the plan that we'll present here, we can eliminate that on July 1st, 2027. So, little bit small type there, and my pointer won't work on the screen, but you guys have seen similar tables in the past, and really it's just a summary of your five-year financial plan. And it starts out at the top with a beginning fund balance. And so as you work down vertically in the table, you have revenue, less expenses, less debt obligations, less capital, project funding, and then you end up with an ending balance. So in that first year, it's like $186,000, it goes down to, you'll end, excuse me, should it ended June 30th with around 200 and, I can't read that far. 232, okay. And then that becomes your beginning balance for the next year at the top. Okay? And then we, the revenue forecasts, well, first we anticipate operating expenses, and then we adjust the revenue needs to be able to meet those goals. And you can see the general fund debt payoff about halfway down the table. You can see we're planning for $120,000 a year to pay off the general fund, and in year five, it would be about $97,000, $98,000 or so. And then that, beginning of that next year is when the $9 surcharge could go away. The Crystal Geyser loan is a $1.2 million loan. Over 12 years, it's zero interest, so it's $100,000 a year. And so that's what you see there for the Crystal Geyser loan. At the very bottom, you see the debt coverage ratios were above 1.2 all the way across the board, which is good, keeps the city in good standing. So to be able to accomplish that financial plan, most of the rate study update document that you see went through functionalization of expenses and cost of service analysis, et cetera, to derive the rates that you see there. And so your current rate for a 5/8 meter is $33, plus the $9 surcharge is $42 a month. And then as you work your way from left to right across the table, you can see how those rates will change to meet your financial goals. It ends up, I think it ends up being about a 4% increase per year, just about matches your 4% increase on expenditures. So in comparing your rates with other agencies, we've got this graph. And so what this does is it compares the city's rate structure with other agency rate structures based on the amount of water that the city typically uses. Okay, so the typical household in the city of Weed, in an average month consumes about 9156 gallons or about 1, about 1,200 cubic feet of water. So I use that volume and all of these other agency rate structures so that we're comparing apples to apples on rates. So currently, you can see there that at that water consumption volume, the average rate for a typical house in Weed would be about 4489 a month. And at the end of five years, that would go up to about 5568 a month. And then the year after that, it would go down $9 by the, yes, sir.
Why is Dunsmere so high? Because of the streams and creeks? I've been watching their meetings, and they've been talking about that. Is that why their numbers are $30 each higher?
Yeah, Dunsmere is in the process of replacing some really old water infrastructure, and their infrastructure is actually a little older than Weed's. And they have some 100-year-old pipe in the ground, and they've taken out some sizable loans through USDA and other agencies to try to fund those improvements. And they have a lot going on right now down there.
Okay, wow.
So you can kind of see, I tried to include most of the Siskiyou County cities that I'm familiar with or have worked with, and I've thrown some others in there around the Redding area that I work with as well. And so as you go across the table there, you can kind of see that, you know, where McLeod sits, Wyrica, the bars that have the crosshatching in them, those are future rates. Those are future rates that have been adopted by these cities. And so I know that because I was involved with the rate studies, so I was able to plot those on there, too. Mount Shasta, far left, I don't know how they do it. Actually, I do. They, you know, most of, well, actually, their entire system is gravity-fed from their cold springs water supply. They do have a couple wells in Mount Shasta, but they only use them when their spring yield drops. And in a drought year, it can drop. Unlike your spring, the yield doesn't change much. Whether there's a drought or not, that water's still there. But Mount Shasta's does fluctuate, and so they don't have near the pumping costs that you guys do. You guys basically pump everything for the entire Bel Air area, South Weed, you know, Summit Drive, South Weed Boulevard, Clear End to downtown. Your spring supply really only serves North Weed and a portion of downtown. So that pumping cost matters, and that's a difference between you guys and Mount Shasta. Any other questions on the water before we jump over to sewer?
One quick question. This is your base rates. Are we adjusting anything over, for usage over the base rates?
Yes. Yeah, and those are shown on that table, Ken. Let's see, I'll see if I can go back there. Okay. So you see the consumption charges there at the top of the table. Your current consumption rate is $12.91 per thousand cubic feet. And as you go from left to right across the table, you can see what those values need to be. And so the graph, the bar graph that I just showed you reflects those numbers.
Okay, got it, thanks.
What did you say the average? What did you say the average was for household 16?
It's about 1,200 cubic feet per month, and that's on an average month, so that's basically taking all 12 months, you know, adding it together, divided by 12. So obviously, in July, that number's considerably higher, and in February, it's considerably lower. But the average of all 12 months for all of the single-family residences in Weed is about 1,200.
And Craig, you and I had this discussion, there's an automatic that everybody gets charged. If you use less than this, it doesn't matter, right?
Correct. There's 1,000.
And it's 1,000, is that number?
Yeah.
Yeah, and in 2017, we had a big discussion on that, whether to include water in the base rate or not. And we felt that, you know, given the nature of socioeconomics and a number of disadvantaged families, that it would be more beneficial that these families had water they could count on in the base rate and didn't have to try to budget for, oh geez, how much water can I afford this month, kind of thing? And so we tried to set that 1,000 cubic feet to be pretty close to what a typical household needs. Any other questions, or we'll move on to sewer?
Get on to the nasty stuff.
And it is.
Yes, it is.
In more ways than one, unfortunately. So the sewer fund, kind of looking at actual expenditures or actual revenue from 2017, actually tracked pretty close to what we predicted. Expenditures were a little higher. They seemed to track more inflationary trends, and it was really across the board. There wasn't anything on the sewer side in the expense category that you could pinpoint and say, oh, wow, that's really high. It was just kind of, all the expenditures were a little bit higher than we anticipated. But the city entered last fiscal year with about $650,000 in cash, which is a pretty sizable reserve. You've seen those numbers, Ken. So a really nice reserve going into last year. Unfortunately, the city's going to be losing about $124,000 a year beginning July 1st from Roseburg. And the reason is that in 2017, when we restructured the rates, we established that non-residential customers will pay a sewer bill based on water consumption. Industrial customers need to go through an industrial waste discharge permit and work with city staff and their experts and determine what sewer volume they should pay for. Well, in 2017, we didn't even know how many sewer connections Roseburg had, how many water connections they had, and so it took a considerable amount of time by both city staff and Roseburg staff to try to figure all this out. So fast forward to a few months ago, Roseburg was able to install, identify and install flow meters on their sewer laterals. And that's really what we want from a city perspective for industrial-type users. We want to meter their flow. We want to make sure they're being charged every gallon they're discharging into the system. So they were able to do that. Unfortunately, and I don't know that any of us completely understood it, and I say us, I mean city staff, that most of their water goes into their industrial processes, cooling water, you know, they have various processes there, and very little of it really gets to the sewer. So they were paying a sewer bill for five years that was considerably more than they needed. But, you know, they could have figured all this out earlier. They could have done the industrial waste discharge application and got it moving, but, you know, it is what it is. So unfortunately for the city, we're going to lose that annual revenue, and that's going to be a big hit. So there's different, there's various ways to deal with it, but through working with the committee, we decided that, you know, we would try to make up for that shortfall trying to utilize some of that cash reserve that the city has accumulated, a combination of that and rate increases to try to make up for that. We didn't want to spend all the cash in reserve. Then at the end of five years, the city has no cash reserves to do any capital improvements. So we kind of came up with a number we felt comfortable with, and then the rest we needed, we had to adjust the rates. I'll go over those with you here shortly. So similar to the water fund, we decided on a 4% per year inflation on expenditures based on what we've seen in the past and what we hope to see in the future. The operating reserve, same 25% operating reserve applies, the same 1.2 debt coverage ratio. One thing that's different since 2017 is the city's implemented the solar project, and so there's a debt associated with that, but it has reduced the city's utility charges by about half, so it's doing what it's intended to do. And of course, this really applies to both the water and sewer funds. The city is pretty aggressive at going after grants and just got notified of a pretty sizable one through CDBG, which is great, and we've got several applications in for other grants to make capital improvements. So the city's done well with that over the years. Terms of the financial plan, very similar to the water fund, it works the same way. You start out at the top with a beginning fund balance, and you add revenue and subtract expenses, debt, capital, projects, and you have an ending fund balance at the bottom there. And then that becomes your starting balance for the next year. And so you can kind of run through that table. One thing to point out, the line about a third way down, the total revenue, you can see for last fiscal year, it was projected to be about $636,000. And because of the loss of revenue from Roseburg, it's going to drop to about $553 this year. So that drop is a result of that loss in revenue from Roseburg. The city, the only debt that the city has in the sewer fund is related to the solar payment. Last fiscal year, there was about $28,000 borrowed from the general fund that was paid off. So at the bottom, you see the debt coverage ratio. You're sitting pretty good at the end of last fiscal year, and then it drops like a rock because of that loss in revenue. And then you start to build it back in about year three. You get out to year five, you look at that 2.98 and go, man, why is that so much? And the reason is, is you have very little debt. So if you had more debt, that would obviously be lower. So just because it's 2.98 doesn't mean that there's something out of whack there. And then you'll notice also, the second line from the bottom, the ending fund balance, we should have ended the last fiscal year with about $660,000, and at the end of five years, that's going to drop down to about $339,000. So that drop in reserve is what's used to kind of soften the rate increases.
In the projected year from fiscal years '23 to '24, it drops as far as ending balance about, well, a lot, from 524 to 362. That's according to the capital project funding of 156?
Yeah, that has an impact, for sure, yeah.
And what is that project? What is that?
There's several projects, and Craig, do you have a copy of my report by chance? I didn't bring one. Jim to the rescue. Look at that, thank you, sir. Okay, let's see, where is that table? Okay, so in the very wordy, lengthy report, table 5.3 on page 19 has a table called Capital Improvement Plan for the sewer. And so in '23, '24, there's a couple things. The big thing is the city needs to do an update to its master sewer plan, which are, have some age on them. And so that's a big one, that's $100,000. And then the city's in the process, I believe, of acquiring a vacuum truck. Okay, so the vacuum truck, I don't know if it's been discussed at the council level, but, okay. So you guys are aware of the benefits and all that for both the water and sewer funds? And so what we did is we kind of split that payment up between the water, sewer, and general funds based on the benefit there. based on the benefit there.
I was just wondering about the sewer, because when I first moved back, something came up in my shower, my bathtub, and I called Claus, I said, what is this? He goes, that's sewage, like, I never seen that before, and it was scary.
Yeah.
And we had to just mop it out. That was different for me. That was, yeah.
Yeah. What year was that about? Had, had they done any work on, on the collection system since then?
2010 is when, but I know we talked about the truck and sewage, the sewage pipes then.
Yeah. The, you know, the city, most of North Weed sewers have been replaced. There's still some old clay sewers in Bel Air. And we actually did a bunch of work in Lincoln Heights when we did the North Weed sewer, right? But the old clay pipes, they grow roots into the joints.
Lincoln Heights thing was on Railroad Avenue? I think it was.
Yes.
I see the street there, yeah.
Yes, yep. And they actually had a newer collection system than what kind of the Stringtown area did. The Stringtown area was clay pipe, it was running under the houses, and I think the Lincoln Heights side was asphalt, concrete pipe. So it's a little newer, a little better shape, had a little more useful life. But, yeah, the vacuum truck is a big deal. Something that's definitely needed.
So, is the Bel Air district at one point or another gonna have new connections? Or is that something that we haven't planned for yet?
We're in the process of applying for grant money for that, for both water and sewer. We, we did what we could with the last sewer project. But there's, there's good grant opportunities for both water and sewer infrastructure there, and we're applying for grants for that.
Because a lot of those units also have like, two lines going to one. There's like these Y connections.
Right.
So my, my line might be plugged up, but it might not, might not be caused by me, it goes through the neighborhood.
Yeah. So what we'll do, Ken, when we, when we go through there is, is we'll provide individual Y connections to each house and, so that they're on separate.
Okay.
Yep. And provide clean outs of the property line, so that if you have that backup problem, you've got access to the city's main and back to the house.
We already put one in, but that's okay.
Okay.
When, on this sheet, it says revenue from water rates, is that revenue from sewer rates?
I'm sorry, yep.
Okay, alright.
I, I always leave one in there to see if you guys are paying attention.
Well, my screen's very hard to read, Jeremy, so I have to say, we need to...
This is still messed up. No, it wouldn't help.
I mean...
It's a dark white thing, it's weird.
Fuzzy.
No, he can see mine.
Oh, they're real.
Oh, real paper, alright. Thank you.
Well, we have it in here too, didn't we?
This?
Any other questions on this table?
I'm good.
Okay. So we'll move on. Th- this is our projected five-year rate plan. Currently, the single-family flat sewer rate is 29.23 a month. And that's projected to go to 32.15 this year. And then it's about a $3 a month increase, give or take, across the board for the five-year period.
$3 a year, right?
It's, yeah, it applies for a year, so it's, it's $3 a month and that, and that rate will stay for 12 months, yes, yep. So it's, it's, you know, I mean, you, you look at where it starts at 29.23 and ends in five years at 44.54, and you go, holy cow, that's a pretty good jump.
It's only $15.31.
That, that's very true, and I, I think the next slide is fairly compelling.
Um, I, I got a question on this one too.
Sure.
Is it the same thing as the water? If, if you use more than that, you get charged more than that, or that's a flat?
That's flat for, uh, single-family residences. And so in, in 2017, we did a, a water consumption evaluation of all the single-family residents, and we, we kind of took the average of typical winter water use. And that's pretty, pretty typical for other agencies as well. Okay. So this is similar to the water rates. This is just a comparison of the city's sewer rates. And this, these are for single-family residences relative to other agencies. And as you can see, weed at 29.23 is way down to the left there. And even with the increases we're talking about, you're still gonna be lower than anybody else. Maybe that doesn't feel as good, but it is reality. You look at some of those, some of the other cities that, your neighbors in Siskiyou County, and you've got McLeod there, Dunsmere at 59, and Dunsmere's gonna go to 77 in three more years. Mount Shasta, they're sitting at 61, and they're gonna go to 78 in about four years. Redding, Shasta Lake, American Valley, across the board. So, the increases will be felt, obviously. But I think this graph kind of puts things into perspective. It's not cheap to operate a sewer enterprise fund.
No, but, but it's good to know, because we're gonna get the questions of, you know, why are we paying more water than they pay in Mount Shasta?
Right.
And we're gonna go, well, you might be, but you're paying less sewer than they are, so it kind of averages itself out.
Right.
So every, bottom line, every community is different. But when, are any of the projects that we have going on, like, we have to expand our sewer, sewer plant, right? Will that come in and impact those rates that's not seen here, or is it...
That, that remains to be seen, however, we have the regulatory entities on our side, and there's a lot of grant money out there. So we're going full steam for grant in hopes that it doesn't cost the city anything. And that, it remains to be seen, but that, that's the plan. That's what we're doing at this point.
Excuse me, Paul?
Yeah.
The, there's the bill that was just passed, the federal bill that was just passed. A lot of money's going into solar and, are we going to be... Obviously, we'd be looking at something like that, but I was, out at the sewer plant, we have quite a bit of room out there, and it seems as if those panels out there are pretty effective. Are there, are we looking for grants that are going to, that, that we could end up putting a, a block or two out there, or...
Sure, it, it, pretty much, that's kind of standard procedure these days. But at this time, we don't know what the improvements look like, so we don't know power loads, we don't know area requirements and that sort of thing. But once we get a project identified that this is the recommended project, a solar component is always evaluated with it.
You think there's gonna be more of it now?
Potentially. It really depends on, you know, what, what new power loads you might have. Obviously, we wanna, any improvements we make out there, we wanna minimize power consumption to the extent we can. And if we can do that without showing a net increase in, in electrical power, we will do that. But if you need more power, then one way to mitigate that is through additional solar. So there just, we just don't know enough yet.
Okay. Thanks.
And that is the end of my presentation.
I would say it's better than I thought. Cause I'm looking at $4 or $5 per month for a household. That's, that's pretty decent, so good job, I thought. I'd like, I'd like it to be one, but I mean...
We were looking pretty good until the, the meters were put in.
Exactly, exactly.
We, we, that was kind of a strange deal, cause we were getting ready to talk about that at the, I think it was two council meetings ago, and literally the day before the council meetings, when we got the call from Roseburg saying, hey, we got the meter finished. Like, oh, so we went over there, and that's when we thought, uh-oh, that's why we pulled it off the agenda that night.
Well, we managed to build a reserve.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that helps a lot.
It helped, yeah. So, but losing that revenue was a pretty good shot in the arm for that, that fund too, so, anyway.
Is it still true that not everyone has meters? I know mine was put in, they called for that, but not everyone has the new meters, right? Is that still the same?
Correct. All, all the new meters, the remote readers have not been installed. We're waiting for some that are on back order. That's just like everything else, you just can't...
It's a supply chain thing going on right now with that as well.
We're working on that, and we're working on that through CDBG money, and we're just using the money to buy the meters, and we're doing self-installation, so...
So there's no like, hidden costs gonna kind of beat us in the head, right?
No, no, not on these.
That's good.
But it'll, it'll increase the efficiency.
Right.
And, but be prepared, I will tell you that, everybody that, that I've talked to as far as when you have one of those AMRs put in, they're much, much more accurate because the old dial meters, they wear out after a while, in the favor of the homeowner or the business owner. And these, being a digital reader, are, are much more accurate, so...
Plus accurate, then the person running through the lawns and looking different, just scanning the numbers, right?
Well, they'll be able to just drive by, yeah. Yeah, we'll be, we'll have, he'll have a laptop and a little antenna, and he just drives by. Which used to take us, how much does it take us usually to do a, a read right now?
It'd take, it'd take everybody, the whole crew, like, like three days.
Yeah.
And now with that, those that we have in right now is, is two people, three days is, is already eliminated for this driving.
Yeah, cause we already have partial, so. But once it all gets installed, that'll help out, increase our efficiency quite a bit too, because we had to pull guys off, sometimes off of jobs just to go read meters.
Right.
Since we have such a small public works department, that, that creates issues too, so, but that'll, much more efficient.
On...
One question, ma'am.
On that reserve fund for the sewer, how much are we utilizing of that every year? Is it going to zero? I don't know if that, I didn't see it, maybe I missed it.
No, it's, it's not going to zero. So for example, this year, the intent is to use about 130,000 of it. Next year, use, you know, a little bit more, probably 180 or so. And then the next year, about 30 something thou, about 30,000. And then it's gonna remain relatively flat, because by year three, the rate increases have kind of caught up to generate the revenue you need. And so then you'll, you'll hold that reserve at about 339,000 at the end of five years.
Thanks.
Okay.
We can move on to the next item?
So...
Number five.
We don't have to do any, we don't have to...
That was just the presentation.
Information. So now we go to the...
Resolution.
Resolution for the water and sewer rates.
Yep.
We will consider setting a public hearing to adopt increased water and sewer rates for October 13th, 2022. Approve the 2022 Water and Sewer Utility Rate Study Updates and direct staff to provide notice pursuant to Proposition 218. Alright, so would anybody like to...
And just to reiterate, the, the rate study update, I'm not sure if it made it into the agenda packet, but I believe it was provided to everybody.
Mm-hmm.
And it is available at, by request through the city clerk. And that's the rate study that was synopsized by Mr. Reuter and will be approved under this resolution.
Okay. Would anybody like to...
I'll make a vote.
You have the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 13-2022. Resolution, do we have to...
12.
Resolution to City Council, do we have to do that?
It's 12.
There's two of them. The, the first one is 12.
The first one is...
Resolution Number 12-2022, by title only, a resolution in City Council of the City of Weed adopting guidelines for submission and tabulation of protest.
No, no, no. It's, item B, we're on item B.
Council Number 12. We're too far on mine, we'll think, somebody else take this.
Can you do B and let him, he's, he's stuck on C.
And that, there's 12-2022, is that the one?
Yes. Is your mic on?
Are you...
It is now.
Are you doing 12-2022?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 12-2022, a resolution to City Council of the City of Weed declaring their intention to adopt increased water and sewer rates, setting a public hearing for October 13th, 2022, and directing staff to provide notice pursuant to Proposition 218.
I second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. We have no public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carried.
So I will move for a Resolution Number 13-2022, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Weed adopting guidelines for the submission and tabulation of protests in connection with rate hearings conducting pursuant to Article... Oh...
13D.
What is it?
13D.
13D, you're good. Section 6 of the California Constitution.
I'll second it.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. Again, we have no public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, motion carried. Staff reports.
Justin, you wanna start?
Sure, a couple things. The Weed Peace Officers Association will be hosting another Free Swim Day for 16 and under on August 27th. That's gonna be the same weekend as the car show and the cornhole tournament on the 28th. We will be paying the fees for anybody 16 and under to get into the pool. We hope to have a good turnout as it's pretty close to the end of the swim season.
Do you know how many you had at the one you guys sponsored for Carnivali?
We had approximately 60 for the Carnivali. We're hoping to have another good turnout for that, as it's being a car show and a cornhole tournament, so... Wanna show everybody the, we finally decided on a new color scheme. We will be getting the new patrol vehicles on the road hopefully soon. We're gonna be going away, away from the gold swoosh that we've had for about 15 years now. Something simple, but be looking for that soon to, on those new explorers. So, we've signed off on the, that color scheme, and hopefully they can get that produced for us and on the cars. We're gonna do the wraps on the doors, that, the, to get the white doors from the factory, it's about a $1,600 fee. So we're just gonna do white wrap on the door, and then I do like, I, I, we had multiple mockups. One of the, one of them was very busy, it reminded me of a NASCAR. So, I, I did, I, I did wanna stick with the black and whites. I know a lot of agencies are going with all black or all white, but I, I do like the look of a black and white for a patrol vehicle. And then lastly, I'd like to, to say thank you to my staff. They pulled together, we had, you know, there's never a good time for a fire, but we were, with vacations and trainings, we, we were short-staffed, but we, we were able to help out on that response with about approximately, I don't have the exact number, about 150 man-hours, helping out with law enforcement, both patrol and dispatch. We sent dispatchers up even to help with that. So I'd just like to thank them for their efforts.
Justin, I would like to echo that in that we had the evacuees and the Weed Police Department, Justin personally, and then the others also checked on us several times a day throughout the entire stay of the evacuees. So, it was, it was, it just made us feel a little bit better about everything, everyone that was there. So, thank you. Alright, Craig?
I have nothing to report.
Steve?
Can I have a question out there? Some time ago, a couple people made some comments to me, and I think I relayed them at a meeting here, about a stop sign on the hillside and it's a Shasta.
Shasta, yeah.
No, we'd have to have, Justin's gonna have to look into that.
Well, it'd be similar to the process for the one that we put in there at Alamo and Railroad. So, that would be at a, at the request of a council member to...
And it's the same way?
Mm-hmm.
Where there's a stop sign going one way, but not coming the other way?
Yeah, we haven't had, accident-wise, we haven't had too many accidents. We haven't had, accident-wise, we haven't had too many accidents at that location. I understand why people will, would want that.
It's a slow traffic, what they...
It is. I will tell, I will, I will state this, it will not have the effect that they think it will. I, I believe it would be a safety issue, because it's a two-way stop for one part of the T and a no-stop for the other part. That's more of a concern. But as far as the speeding, I don't know that that's going to have the effect they think it will. There's actually an effect there. I don't have the physics term for it, but people going up the hill on both sides, that roadway actually is curved. So what happens is, you're accelerating, everybody cress and continues to accelerate. They don't, I don't think they actually realize that they're going beyond the 25 miles per hour, because they're continuing to accelerate. That's what's happening on that hill. I've, I've noticed it myself, on both ends of hillside. That's, that's what's occurring.
Well, my complaint didn't come from the other side. Complaints that I heard were from...
Shasta Avenue.
Sure.
They're, they're hoping that it's going to slow down the kids coming out of the school and coming around that corner.
The acceleration between the intersection and, and the next stop sign is going to be the same.
I'm going to call you.
Yeah. Well, we're, we're up there, we're, we're working traffic, and we're planning for the first day of school on the 22nd. So, we, we do, we do throw a lot of time out there, up there when we have a chance with the radar guns. Ultimately, it comes down to, to students mainly. Students are a problem, but honestly, it's a lot of the residents. The highest, one of the highest speeds I got up there was one of...
He said it was the students.
Yeah. Well, it's teachers, it's parents, and, but it's the residents that are complaining often are the ones that get pulled over. So, yeah, I will, I will put that out there. Sure.
We stand out there with blowgears.
Yeah. Sewer, sewer volunteer to stand out there with the radar gun.
With the blowgun. They don't know.
They won't know the difference. You, you need, you better get your yellow vest. All right. Steve?
Just, we sold the engine 12-12, in case you haven't heard. We wanted 60, we got 55. We sold it to somebody in Pennsylvania. It cost them $10,000 to ship it out there, so we gave them $5,000 off. So, we did sell that. We're still working on the, we haven't even worked on the old engine yet, it's still up at the city yard, but because we got caught up in the fire, we, Chief Carter's got a crew out the fire right now, and I have a crew here at the station, so they're, they've been going out. Lot of hiking in that area, not so much sitting at your truck putting fire out, it's more hiking, putting fire out. So, when the guys come back in the morning, they're exhausted. So, they're doing a good job making progress, so, that's all I got right now. They're busy.
Okay. David?
Just a brief update on the Hammond Land Owners Association case. I believe the city manager updated you with respect to the Court of Appeal opinion, which found that there was a violation of SEQA with respect to the noise element in the EIR. So that case has now returned to the Superior Court, and we anticipate that a writ of mandate will be issuing from the court shortly, at which point, we're going to have to bring that back to the council to rescind the project approvals and to essentially decertify the EIR. We'll do that by resolution, and then we'll file that resolution with the court to demonstrate that we've complied with the writ of mandate. And at that point, it's really going to be up to the, the developer to decide how they want to proceed, whether or not to proceed with the project.
Condemn to Love's truck stop.
Love's truck stop.
Five years, right? Four hundred years.
If they, if they proceed, does that mean we, they have to start a brand-new EIR?
Yeah. I think they could probably just, just deal with the noise issue.
Okay.
The baseline is still the same.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just, just that one part of it. It, it, it's essentially, the way I look at it, as they got a technicality, because the Court of Appeals was basing, kicking it back on the noise based on a precedent set from a year, 18 months ago on a case before this was even...
It didn't involve us.
It didn't involve us, but it was a...
It was, the case came out after this lawsuit had already been initiated.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Is, is it public knowledge on who funded the people from Hammond?
I have, I don't have...
Is it public?
Is it public information?
Not that I, I'm not sure.
No, I, I, I...
You'd have to ask that.
I won't, I won't be rumor mongering.
No, I, yeah, well, we know.
That's okay.
The, the, I know for a fact, and so does the person, Kim Van Dyke, who used to be the, he used to actually work for a competitor of Love's, and that was their, the way they operated, unlike Love's, who looks as compet, they're not afraid of competition. So, anyway, I'll leave it at that.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay. Kim?
I, since Sandy is not here, so, I left her all the muffins, so. I, I just want to say a big, big shout-out again to Chief Mayberry, Chief Duncan, and the folks at the shelter. I, too, went there two or three times a day, just to kind of check, to see how things were going. Some days were going better than others, but I think everybody as a collective did a fantastic job in showing that we are true neighbors of Wyrica. I know it got tense a couple of times, with some of the rhetoric and some of the discussions, but the overall thing was, we, we had folks that were essentially, you know, evacuees who had nowhere else to go. And that's one of the things I think we have to remember sometimes. These folks are people that don't have friends or family, or the means to go get a hotel room, or, or go, you know, they don't have travel trailers to go stay in. So, when those things happen, it, you know, we sometimes just look at some of the, what I would call the characters that show up at the evacuation centers. But I, I think for the most part, when you talk to most of the people that were truly evacuated, that had nowhere else to go, our community pulled together really nicely and showed them what, you know, weed is all about. Real quickly, I've sent you some information regarding a community survey. I know Councilmember Hall has discussed at, at some point of doing something. I'm in the process of gathering what it would look like for us to do some sort of community survey online. There is the other side of it, to where a true survey is not necessarily, everybody just load up and go online and, and fill it out. It's actually done, if you want a scientific survey, it's done randomly. The problem is, I talked to some of the folks at some of the cities, I've done surveys before, where you have professionals come in and do it. If you really want a true sampling of, of what the community thinks, it would, it'd require a little bit more intense work and possibly some funds to be able to do something like that. So, we'll need to kick that around, but I think, I called the company that did the ones from the other cities that I've worked at. Typically, they ranged anywhere from, I want to say 15 to 17,000, the ones I, the, the two cities, I did one in Auburn, and I did one in Durant, and there was some very useful information for future projects and future things the city did. They think that they could probably do the City of Weed's for around six, and to do a sampling of, of, to get, you know, a true sample of what, what it would be. So, anyway, but, but I will get you some more numbers in regards to that, too. But it kind of, the nice things about surveys, whether you have somebody do it or, or not, it kind of gives you a flavor of what the priorities are in the, in the community, which I think is important, because sometimes we think we hear the, a lot of the, you know, the squeaky wheels get the grease, and unfortunately, there's a lot of people that just stay home, and they don't say much, but they have a lot to say. But they may not say it publicly. And that's one of the great things about some of these surveys, these community surveys, that allows them to do it. And to have them rank the priorities within the, you know, the town of what they think are the most important, you know, down to what some of them are the least, is, it's interesting to see what some of the data shows, so. And also, it's, I hate to say this, but it's also eye-opening for some of the departments, too, because you get a, other than the fire department, everywhere I've worked, everybody loves the fire department. You guys don't have potholes or give tickets either, so. So, but they, yeah, but, but it, it also is kind of, you know, I always tell my department heads, don't take it personally, these are just things, these are, you know, a, a sample of what some of the folks in the community feel like, your strong suits are and some of your weak suits are. And same thing, they even do it to the top city management, you know. I get beat up worse than Public Works and Police, believe it or not, every city I've worked at, I mean, they just, you know...
It's public for the wire.
Ex, exactly. And, yeah, they, 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 they take all their, their discontent on me, so, which is fine. But we'll, we'll look at that. We also had an, an RFP meeting this afternoon with the sanitation folks. We had three different companies show up, and we talked about it briefly earlier. They have until, when is it, Craig, the 17th or 18th, to get us everything in writing as far as any other questions. We'll answer the questions, and then we disseminate the answers to all of them. So they all have the same, just like today, they all had the ability to ask questions verbally, and then they have the que, they can follow up with written questions. We had some really good questions that came up as a result of the, of the meeting this afternoon, and I think it's good. Just a quick update on the EV lot. We are still in the process, our electrical vehicle charging station lot. Big kudos to Craig and the guys down at Public Works, they've done a great job in cleaning up the lot. That was a lot of stuff out there, and a lot of trees, even the ones growing through the building. So, they are in the process, from what I've been told, they're going to start marking all the pieces of the building and disassembling it, and reassembling it out at the Public Works for storing equipment and, and other things, supplies. So we're hopeful that we'll have something. The company that we were in contact, tact with before, has expressed some frustrations. They were utilizing primarily some grant sourcing, and there's some issues that, some bureaucracy things that have happened, but there is another major charging company that has expressed interest as well, so we'll, we'll look at multiple options as far as when that happens. But, I mean, if you look at the way California's going, I think it's, was it by 2035, where no more gasoline, and new gasoline cars will be sold in California? It's going to be EV-only, the new ones will be. So, I think that's something we need to kind of get a head-up in the game, and I think by having this, it'll help a, a great deal, too. And the nice thing about the, I, I had one of the downtown merchants approach me, and I said, that was a great idea, of having some sort of signage at the EV station with some pointing, restaurants this way, shopping this way, that kind of, you know, so folks just stop in, they have no idea, they've never been to weed before, they can come in, and they know where to go eat, go shop, go get some souvenirs. So, that'd be nice for that, too, so. And that's all I have at this point.
I have a question about the RFA, or RFP, whichever. Is part of that, are we still thinking of doing the direct billing?
Yes, that, this, this, this entire exercise that we've been, with, with this, is going to be similar to what I call the Wyrica model, which is, they bill directly to the customers. We would help establish the rates, and then they would be billing directly to the customers themselves. So it'll be a big change for our customers, but we've kind of let them know ahead of time that there is getting ready to be some changes. We sent them a letter, letting them know that change is coming, and we apologize for the service that they're getting now, and, but we feel like it's going to improve soon. Just got to be patient with us.
People all across the city, is this too late? They're just doing things like going and getting people's trash cans, pulling it out to the street, doing a lot of extra things that, that should have been done before, but they weren't doing it. Sad.
Anytime you have, kind of the model that we had set up before, I, I, I think it kind of lends itself to, the performance can lack, and the contractor still gets paid no matter what. I think that, you know, is a valuable lesson learned here, and I think by having the contractor deal directly with the customers, too, that will be the nice thing, is having, where you'll be able to pick up the phone and actually talk to somebody at the company and saying, you missed mine, or whatever, or my cart, the wheel fell off, or something to that. It'd be not, it'll be nice to be able to have that direct contact with the vendor or with the contractor, and be able to express that. Or if you have issues with your, your bill, those type of things, you'll be able to do as well. And...
It'll be nice for our office staff not to have to fill those calls.
I, I get, Craig and I get CC'd on every single one of those, just, we just started asking for that, what, about three or four months ago, and man, my, my, half my emails during the day are, I can always tell, because Mary's still got the dispatch side of her, she puts everything in all caps, and so, so I see it. Paul, yeah, Paul, Paul, he's, oh my God. But, yeah, so, but, yeah, so, anyway, but it's, it's, it'll be, it'll be nice for staff, but it'll also be nice for our customers, too, especially.
So the, the people that have been doing, picking up for the last month or so, they're the same people that are losing the contract, correct?
The same people who have decided not to put a bid in.
I'd, I'd like to say this, though, that the people that they're working, they work their tails off, trying, trying to keep up. I mean...
They do.
They don't have the equipment.
Just didn't have the equipment, but I mean, those people worked like men work, like can work. I mean, it was like the old...
The old days of slim, slim cans.
Old days, you had, you had a 50-gallon drum, and you...
Oh, yeah.
There wasn't a garden...
They do, and, 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 I mean, those are the worker bees out there.
They did a job.
And hopefully, there may be some spots for them.
I hope, I hope. They, they, they were super.
The new contractor comes in. Yep.
I did have a friend comment on, she didn't understand why she got the letter in the mail, because she loves the, those people. She thinks they're great. I said, okay, I'm going to tell Mary.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
You're in seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.